... of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, please turn it to silence or vibrate, or whatever you want to call it. I'm doing the same thing. I always forget. Okay. The roll, please.
Vaughn.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Seven present, no absent.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the members of the audience want to address the council on any subject? It doesn't have to be something that's on our agenda this evening, but something you wanted to bring to our attention. Then we'll move on. And the next item is the approval of the minutes of June 4th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll, please.
Marques.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
I'm staying.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacIver.
I'm abstaining.
Five ayes and two abstentions.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Just one communication this evening. Resident Stan Emick, 7100 block of Hudson, extremely happy with quick response by our Public Works on some work that had to get taken care of through his vendor to bust up a sprinkler head on his property, and was very, very happy how fast that got turned around, so, thank you.
Pass it on, thank you.
Any other communications to share? Let's move on to the mayor's report, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure to read the mayoral proclamation honoring the 2018 Darien Lions Club Humanitarian of the Year. Whereas Daniel Robert Widener was born in Chicago, Illinois, in 1950, the only son of Roy and Dorothy Widener. Whereas Dan grew up in Downers Grove, Illinois, attended local public schools, which included Downers Grove North High School, where he excelled at basketball and earned the nickname "Hog" for his record number of rebounds. And whereas Dan was also recognized for his patriotic spirit in earning the Sons of American Revolution, good citizenship of war, an honor bestowed on him by the faculty and his fellow students. This honor, given for excellence, independability, service, leadership, and patriotism, signified his deep devotion to God and country. And these traits remained evident in Dan's life as a family man, businessman, friend, and community leader. And whereas Dan followed family tradition by attending and graduating from Barbara College, as did his father and grandfather, he put his training to work while heeding the call of service to country by enlisting for a four-year term in the United States Navy, where he served as the ship's barber and supply operator. And whereas upon completion of his service, Dan returned to our local area and accepted a position with the center barber shop in Heritage Plaza. And after five years, he owned his own shop in the Brookhaven Plaza, known as Daniel's Hair Care Brookhaven Salon Studio, which began his career as a barber owner in the Darien community. Dan's career totaled forty-seven years, forty-two-plus years in Darien, and his success is best exemplified using his own words. "My guys are more than just customers, they're my friends." Whereas Dan was above all else, an exceptional husband and father, he met the love of his life, Janice, and they were happily married for nearly forty-five years. Those who knew him well and shared stories often heard him speak of his wife in ways that gave a clear sense that she was his greatest joy in life, along with their six children, as the crowning extension of their love together. And whereas Dan's success in life was in outgrowth of his adherence to strong Christian values, he never spoke ill of anyone. He always had compassion for others, especially those who were going through troubled times. And whereas Dan loved fishing, sports, and outdoor activities, he reveled in the beauty of God's creative efforts as he sat at the side of a lake or pond quietly fishing and appreciating nature's offerings. He was passionate about baseball. He studied and enjoyed the history of the game and was a fervent fan. His love for the White Sox...
Yes.
...was exceeded only by his love for God, family, and country. Those who shared his love for the Sox also shared in great victories and bitter disappointments. Either way, Dan always had a positive attitude, confident that the future held potential for great promise. And whereas Dan conducted business with the goal of not only succeeding as a business owner, but as a supporter of others within and outside the Darien business community, the motto of the city of Darien, "A nice place to live," was evidenced in the way Dan interacted with our community. And whereas Dan served on the board of the Brookhaven Merchants Association in various positions, on and off for many years during his tenure, always working to defend and speak out on behalf of his fellow merchants, he worked diligently to demonstrate that their success would always be predicated on the relationship they forged with their clients and the Darien community. During his years of involvement, he organized many activities and events that reached out to the community. For several years, he organized and was responsible for the Brookhaven Merchants sponsoring a float in the Fourth of July Parade. His final effort as president of the association culminated in organizing a community event, Brookhaven Plaza's 50th anniversary, with the fest that took place in the center. And whereas Dan gave his time, money, and effort to support local service, civic, and community groups, he could always be counted on to support each of these groups with special service to the Four Corners Community Church, whose landscape benefited from his love of gardening. And whereas Dan Widener modeled a lifestyle to which we should all aspire, not only as business owners, but as human beings who have a deep concern for bettering the lives of others, Dan touched so many lives in such positive ways that his passing on May 12th, 2018, was deeply felt. And whereas a wise person once said that if you are fortunate to find people in your life who you can truly call friends, then take a small part of your heart and give it to them, so they may always remember your friendship and love. Dan Widener gave a part of his heart to the many people who had an opportunity to call him friend, and our lives are truly richer for having known him. And whereas the Darien Lions Club is proud to honor Daniel Robert Widener as the 2018 Lions Humanitarian of the Year, now therefore, I, Kathleen Weaver, mayor of the city of Darien, hereby proclaim June 19th is Daniel Robert Widener Day in the city of Darien, and recognize his many contributions. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak? The roll, please. Pretend.
Yeah, okay. Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Well, you haven't named everybody else here, okay.
Treasurer Corn.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Attorney Murphy.
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor Weaver.
The aye.
Administrator Vanna.
Aye.
Clerk Wagona.
Aye.
Unanimous.
It's unanimous. Did you want me to have Janice to come up to accept the proclamation now? John, do I understand you have some words to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm John Galon, past president of the Darien Lions Club, and I just have just a couple of quick things to say. The proclamation that was read is quite encompassing, that really outlined Dan and what he's done for this community. So, on behalf of the Darien Lions, I can tell you that Dan was very active in helping us anytime we asked for space in his store, or to be able to put a collection can in his shop. He was always very open with us and to help us any way he could. We talked about in the proclamation about his float in the parade. It was always a lot of fun to see what he was going to put together and bring into that parade every year. From a personal note, I moved into Darien in 1982, and I started going to the hair care location just a couple of years later, and I've been going there ever since. The first time I ever met Dan, I introduced myself to him, and hello, how are you? And over the years, every time I'd walk into the shop, he'd always say hello to me by name, and I thought it was just my charming personality that had... But that's the way he was with everyone. He knew everybody's name the first time that you met him. Our Lions Club is about a hundred and forty-odd guys, quite odd guys. Hundred and forty or more strong, and I would venture to say that about half of us go to Daniel's Hair Care and now the salons over the years. So he knew a lot of us by first name, but that's the way he was with everyone. So I would just like to say to the family, your dad was absolutely a terrific fellow.
Thank you.
Janice, would you like to come up and accept the proclamation? All the way up here? Because we all have to shake your hands. Good to see you again. Do you need a picture? Someone take a picture? Why don't I come down there? Okay. Yes, after we... Let's get the picture. I think someone's ready to take your picture. Get the family up there. Do you want...
Family up there.
Wait, the mayor's coming. You want to? Take in the picture? Okay. That's kind of a mission here. Yes. Want me to take it from there?
Sure. City, come on up.
I'm not gonna read a picture.
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome, darling.
Funny, one, two, three. Giddy, look over here. Need my glasses. Madam Mayor, and members of the city council, and members of the Darien Lions Club, and to all my family here and my friends, I just want to share this with you tonight. When a letter arrived in the mail having a return address labeled "Darien Lions Club", I initially set it aside because I had other, more critical items that I knew I had to get to. But I took a quick second brief look at that envelope, and I saw that it was hand-addressed to Mrs. Janice Widener. And so, of course, my curiosity got the best of me, so I opened it. The letter was rather lengthy. It was one and a half pages, typewritten and single-spaced. So, because I had no idea what the significance of this letter was all about, I decided to go into speed reading mode, and I was essentially just basically skimming the letter. Until I got to, all the way to the bottom of the first page, when I saw the name Daniel Widener. And so, it was at that point that I knew I had to start from the beginning. I had to reread that letter, and I had to be attentive to what I was reading, and I had to read it word for word. Because I knew my husband's name in there made that letter significant. So, at that point, I knew that that letter went from basically a cursory glance on a piece of paper and a quick toss into the recycling bin, to being a very important and significant piece of paper that I knew I would keep and cherish forever. So, and I had always known that Dan had a high... I mean, Dan was highly regarded here in this community, but really, this letter that came from Joe really brought greater clarity to some of the reasons why. I believe Dan would have received this award, and he would have felt truly honored and truly grateful. But at the same time, I also believe that he would have thought, genuinely thought and felt, that someone else was worthier of having received it. Because Dan was a very humble man, he was genuinely humble, and I think in part that's why he was so well-loved by so many people. So, I just want to stand here before you tonight and thank you, Darien Lions Club, for selecting Dan, and in doing so, you greatly honor me and our children. When I got that letter, it was just like, I didn't know if I was crying out of sadness or if I was crying out of great joy, and I think it was both, because I wished he were here to get it himself. But I just want to say, I'm very honored, and I know my children are honored, and I have some of my family here who are very honored as well. And I think he was very worthy of having received it, and I'm very... I'm just very glad, very happy, and very thankful. And so, I just want, on behalf of me and my kids and my family, thank you. Thank you very much.
Janice, thank you very much for your words.
I understand there's going to be a cake and coffee next door for the Widener family in honoring Dan, so I am expecting most of the audience to get up and leave. I'm sorry, I just had to do that to you. It came off good.
I know, it came off good.
It's okay. Joe? Joe? Joe, that was really nicely written. Yeah. We know how worried you can get, so she said it was two pages, single-spaced?
I tried to cut back on the proclamation too, but I sent it to her and she...
Okay. Yeah, we totally lost our audience, this is... Jerry, you can stick around if you'd like.
I like the cake.
Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
I have a couple of items, Madam Mayor. The July 2nd city council meeting has been canceled. The next city council meeting will be held on Monday, July 16th. City offices will be closed on July 4th in observance of the Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you. The city administrator's report?
No report, Mayor Weaver.
Let's move to department head information and questions. The chief, did you want to go over your report, or any comments?
A little bit. Obviously, we had a horrific situation with a double murder and suicide, June 11th, I think it was, June 10th. And so I took that opportunity to talk about a few things in the monthly report regarding domestic violence. What it is, what constitutes domestic violence, the relationships that have to deal with domestic violence. And I think a lot of people think domestic violence, they jump right to husband and wife. But there's a number of different categories that are fulfilled within that statute about domestic violence, and who can get help and how they can get help. So I took that opportunity to talk about the relief that you can get from the police, an arrest of the offender, transportation to a medical facility or a shelter, advice on an order of protection, a 72-hour stayaway order. We even... It's not a part of the statute, but we allow individuals to use our parking lot to make the switch. A lot of people have a tough time with divorce, especially with children. Weak in custody and those type of things, sometimes those are hard, and so the custody switch is made at the police department in order to keep down any further type of violence or anything of that nature. So, a lot of things that the police can do beyond just simply an arrest. And then I talked a little bit about the order of protection, and there's a whole second section on order protections and the things that order protections can do, and how they work. They're a little bit complicated, but if it's part of a criminal situation, the state's attorney's there to assist you. If it's part of a civil process, the attorney that you have can assist you, or some of the social service agencies, and I put the phone number in the monthly report, can assist individuals with that as well. Another thing the court can do is seize weapons and the FOID card of the offender on a temporary basis in order to get through that immediate situation, and then depending on the court situation, further remedies can happen, you know, through the divorce process, or there's plenary order protections, those are, I think, two weeks in length. There's interim order protections and order protections. So, like I said, it gets complicated, but just if the situation happens, contact the police, contact state's attorney, or contact social services, and they can walk you through those things fairly simply. Talking about that, on page seven, we talked about, frequently when I addressed the council, I talk about the major crimes, and domestic violence sometimes gets lost in that shuffle. On page seven, it talks about domestic violence and the frequency. And this year, year-to-date, January to May, compared to last year, January through May, domestic violence is up about forty-seven percent. Fairly significant increase, obviously something that we don't like to see. On the next page is the arrests for domestic battery, and those are up significantly as well, they're up seventy-eight percent. I think a couple of things. One, it shows that the police are involved, they will make the arrests. I think it also shows that just making an arrest doesn't solve the situation. Getting help through the social service agencies, getting help and relief through the court is important as well.
I appreciated that you took that subject matter up in your latest report. It is probably our number-one crime committed, and is it considered the most frequent crime?
Frequent?
Yes.
No, I think thefts and those type of things, property crimes much more frequent. Looking at violent crime, it's probably the most frequent of violent crime, yes.
Chief, in the last couple of reports, I know we've talked about certain statistics, and it was based on how they were reported. Is there anything as far as that situation where these numbers have, you know, increased from a report standpoint?
No, sometimes you see increases just the way that laws may change, or they might add a... Few years back, they added domestic partner, those type of things. So that would increase it, but I don't think that's a situation here. I think it's just a matter of actual domestic violence has gone up. And, you know, sometimes it's cyclical, sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, working the problem and trying to correct it best you can. And we were talking at the police committee about different things and trying to make those things happen, to reduce those, you know, maybe conflict resolution training in schools, you know, because they're getting the training on domestic violence at home, and so maybe we can try to do something to re-educate individuals that are seeing it through better means of conflict resolution, conflict management.
I think that's become a number-one subject matter. I see it in the paper all the time, where there's... Where the police department of Chicago is trying those avenues to reduce.
Yeah, absolutely. The... You know, there's X amount of time that an officer can spend at the scene. Even if you took all that, the time necessary, you're only really fixing that one situation that day. All those things that led up to that, obviously you're not dealing with a lot of the situation. Those really have to come from the social services, they're much better trained, they have the ability to deal with those situations.
Any other questions? Yes?
Sorry, Mayor, just one, chief. Commander Pickley just sent out the updated press release, so I think this is officially the first statement from the police saying it was a murder-suicide, correct? Up until then, there was different press releases. Could you just take a minute? Because whenever something like this may happen, you know, residents want information, and there's certainly a number of things that you can't give information out, or there's a coroner's office, or you have to notify the family. If you could just take a minute to let residents know how that communication works.
We really rarely release any names until Mexican are notified. In this particular case, one of the Mexicans to be notified was in Nigeria, so getting that message was prolonged, which took a longer time to get the names of the victim and perpetrator out. So that was difficult. Whenever there's a criminal situation that occurs, there's a lot of facts and evidence to go through, and working with the coroner, working through the state's attorney to release the information so that we're not jeopardizing a case in this particular situation. It was a suicide, but there was facts at the scene, evidence that we had to get through in order to be able to make that official call. And sifting through the photos and sifting through the evidence takes a little bit of time sometimes. It get really frustrating when you have to wait for toxicology, because that's usually a couple-week wait. In this particular case, it didn't happen, but there's a number of reasons why we have to wait things out.
Yeah. This is not the first time we've had frustrated residents...
It's frustrating.
Yeah, not getting the details.
Sometimes you just got to read through the code, you know, and so when you're told that the community is not at threat, those type of things, kind of read between the lines that it's probably domestic-related, or the perpetrator's encussier perpetrator's known, or those type of things. It's unfortunate.
Which is typically is in a press release, or something we'll put out, so if that's in there, yeah, that's to let everybody know, not to have no immediate danger.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Clistic?
Thank you. Two quick questions. With regards to domestic abuse, what percentage would you say is related to like drugs and alcohol as well, when you come upon a domestic abuse situation?
I don't have that statistical number. I wouldn't know.
Just curious.
I do know, just from anecdotal stories, that it occurs frequently, but to give you a percentage or a number or a guess, I wouldn't be able to.
Okay. And then really quickly, I noticed focus patrols have gone down. Is that due to more 911 calls? This is under Officer Initiated Event category?
No, we redefined focus patrol, and so just an officer going through a parking lot of a business, you know, establishment, like a strip mall, and checking the doors, it used to be counted, each one of those checks was a focus patrol. So now, focus patrol is clearly defined, so to have a focus patrol, there has to be a series of crimes or some analysis that they're trying to particularly fix.
Okay. All right. So I have...
Alderman MacIver?
I asked the chief also to make it, you know, with the July coming up, to talk about fireworks in Darien.
I appreciate that. We did have that conversation at police committee today, and two issues with fireworks. You know, obviously, they're illegal. There are fines that can be levied, some significant, depending on what is in possession, how much is in possession, and in some circumstances, incarceration could occur. The next biggest thing is the danger. Every year, there's somebody blowing off a finger or a hand or injuring some body part because they think that this is okay. And you're going to spend a lot of money, and you're not going to have near the show that you have at, you know, any number of city events, so, you know, take the opportunity to go see a city event, or then to bother your neighbors with blowing off stuff and doing that type of thing. To me, it's crazy. And even be cautious with simple things that are actually legal, like the sparklers. Individuals will play with them, light them, and then they'll just toss them on the ground, and a kid or somebody will step on them, and it's hot, you know, burn. So, you gotta be careful with those individual things. You know, it obviously goes up... You know, it obviously goes up a week or better before 4th of July, and it lasts a week or two after the 4th, and, you know, it's a great thing to celebrate our independence, but let's just be smart about it.
Thank you. Anything else for the chief? Do, does Dan have a report?
I have nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 181904, in the amount of $1,280,701.49 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended June 7th, in the amount of $261,951.98, for a total to be approved of $1,542,653.47.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alden Belzak, seconded by Alden Vaughn? Any questions for the treasurer? Then the role, please. Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The report, the warrant has been approved. Let's move to standing committee reports. Alden Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, the Municipal Services Committee is meeting next Monday night, June 25th, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
And Alden, MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next meeting of the Darien Police Committee is scheduled for Monday, July 16th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Police Department Training Room across the parking lot, pending agenda items, and we also have the, at tonight's meeting, we approve the minutes from the May 21st, 2018 Police Committee Meeting.
Alden Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The July 2nd Admin Finance Meeting has been canceled due to lack of agenda items, and our next Admin Finance Meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 6th, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you.
Alden Shower, I will not be attending the meeting.
Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. I think we covered everything. Does anybody still have any lingering questions? All right, then let's move on to old business, and there being no old business, I'll move right to the consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda. The first item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150, which is our public employees division, and the City of Darien, which will run from May 1st, 2018, through April 30th, 2023. The next item is a motion authorizing BMO Harris, Citibank, Community Bank, Willbrook Countryside Bank, First American Bank, First Merchants Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, MB Financial Bank, Republic Bank, and West Suburban Bank to become depositories for city funds. The next item is a motion to approve the release of executive session minutes that no longer require confidentiality. Do I have a motion to approve? Alden MacIver, seconded by Alden Kenny? The role, please. MacIver?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seven ayes. All items have been approved. Next item is new business. The item A is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a quote from Suburban Laboratories, Inc., for the 2018-19 Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, UCMR-IV Water Sampling Program, in an amount not to exceed $13,480. Do I have a motion to approve? Alden MacIver? Seconded by Alden Belzak? Discussion? The role, please. MacIver?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Somebody's turning off. Okay.
He came right.
That didn't come out right. Okay, so finally, one more time, questions, comments, and announcements? Alden McListick?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question for Mr. Gombach. Any quick status, how the projects are coming along this summer? I know you have a ton of them going, just give us a quick general update, everything.
Actually, we're right in the midst of them. My goal was to update the Public Works Committee, Municipal Services Committee, next week. It's right at the height of everything, so this is where the balances, the checks and balances really comes into play.
And definitely a lot better than AT&amp;T, so they finally got around and putting their grass in after four months, so.
Yeah.
Ten emails a week, so.
I won't even comment, I know.
I know, it's just, yeah. Yep, we've been there before. Okay, so do I have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. Alden Marques?
Just a reminder to the viewing public that the Darien Historical Society is holding their Ice Cream Social this Wednesday, the 20th, at 5:30 at Ole School.
Oh, and the Darien Dog Park is officially open, and, well, it's unofficially open at, right next, on Cheese Road, just next to the White Offices and the Shell Station, and I think tomorrow is the ribbon cutting at 10:00 AM.
Yeah, they have these ribbon cuttings in the middle of the morning when we're all working stiffs, you know? So, I don't know who's attending, Alden MacIver, you are.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Oh, you can't either.
Yeah, I have a meeting, but our dog has been going there, and it's great, and you can get the permits online, and then you can use your paper, you know, the printout in the meantime, before you get your little card in the mail, and if you're a military veteran, your first dog every year can get a free permit.
So you have to do it annually?
Yes, it's an annual permit. It's a calendar, and it's for the calendar year, so if you get it in June, or if you get it in January, it's the same, but it's good, it's good at all the DuPage County dog parks.
Okay, very good. I don't have a dog, so it's, Alden McListick, yes?
Yes, just really quickly for the viewing audience, our block party this year is July 28th, and our beer fest, October fest is September 15th, so we got those block parties already picked, so.
Okay. Back to group. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Alden MacIver, seconded by Alden Vaughn? All in favor?
Aye.
Time is...